Good evening. I'd like to call to order the December tenth, 2019 Town Council Committee of the Whole, special meeting. Excuse me, we've started our meeting, please? Thank you. All members are present with the exception of Counselor Zepary, who notified that he can't be with us this evening. Calendar and Communications. Counselor Baumgartner.
This past Monday, I was part of a delegation representing the town of Groton, the City of Groton and the City of New London, to welcome the Mayor of Kingston, Jamaica, as well as the Council General of New York from Jamaica, as well as the Town Clerk of Kingston, who while the title is Town Clerk, they function very similarly to the Town Manager, their Chief Executive Officer. We had the privilege of touring not just State Pier, but also bringing the delegation to Theremahan. Very impressed with the supply chain that is associated with not just electric boat, but the undersea maritime field. Additionally, we escorted the USS Toledo out to the Thames River, which was quite a treat. I've never done that before, and I don't think most folks have had the privilege of doing that, but it was quite an honor. Looking forward to establishing again sister city ties with Kingston. This is something that all three municipalities have worked on for some time and hope to see additional developments. Also, Counselor O'Brye attended the reception, as did Counselor Bordelon and many others from the town. That is all.
Counselor Parker.
I attended the Holiday Festival at the City of Groton and the Holiday Kickoff at the Senior Center. Great job to everyone that put together everything for the kids. It's a nice time holiday season, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Franco.
I attended the Economic Development Committee, the Trails Committee, and the Holiday Kickoff at the Senior Center as well, and I was pleasantly surprised with the turnout and the amount of kids there, and they said they had an enormous amount of kids, and they were really excited about it. So, thank you.
I had the opportunity to attend the swearing in for the Board of Education. We had Kim Shepperson Watson, Liz Porter, Rita Volkman, and then from the other side, Jay Wheatlof and Katrina, not Katrina, Gretchen Newsome. So, was able to attend with Counselor Bordelon and Mayor Granatowsky, and also two of our RTM members.
Very good. Counselor O'Brye.
I was just celebrating my birthday.
Happy birthday. Counselor Bordelon.
I just wanted to also comment, I also, as Counselor Baumgartner stated, I also got to attend that wonderful event hosting Kingston, Jamaica. It was very exciting. I did not attend the tour, but as Counselor Baumgartner stated, I did attend the reception after, and it was really exciting, and the, all the different people that had come seemed very eager and excited to learn more about the area, and hopefully they come back, or maybe we go to Jamaica, I don't know. Or maybe I'm going to Jamaica after meeting them. Also attended the Board of Ed swearing in, as well as stayed for the Monday Board of Ed meeting. So, that's it.
Counselor Melendez.
I attended three meetings, the Community Development Advisory Committee, the Trails Commission, and the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. I just wanted to send a thank you to Parks and Recreation for the Holiday Kickoff. They did a really nice job, and it was very well attended. And congratulations to the new members of the Board of Education and Chairperson Watson for her leadership role again. And tomorrow night is the RTM swearing in, so if any of you are interested in that, head over to the Senior Center at 7:30. Alrighty, approval of minutes. Item 4A. Counselor Baumgartner, please.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of November twenty-sixth, 2019. So moved.
Is there a second? Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Franco. Any discussion on the minutes? Counselor Franco.
I just had a question on our page ten. I don't recall if I noticed him or not, but did Mr. Zepary vote not to go into executive session? Yeah.
That would have to be checked on the tape, I believe. So...
Now that you noted it, so please have a look at it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on the minutes? Counselor Baumgartner.
I'm not sure the meeting minutes properly reflect Counselor Parker's attendance. It's my understanding she had a meeting relating to the council just beforehand, and it doesn't necessarily clarify that in the meeting minutes.
I'm looking to see. Counselor Parker, did you notice it in here at all?
Yeah, it's just that, I know what you were talking, but that meeting did not happen. It happened on the night of December third. That was another meeting I hadn't been for.
Okay.
The school, my daughter's school. But, thank you.
Anyone else with discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of acceptance of the minutes of November twenty-sixth, 2019, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, we're here at eight counselors this evening. We're on to new business, 5A Building Committee High School Asbestos Project on page eleven. And, Counselor Parker?
Are we doing the presentation first, or just...
We need a motion, then we can ask Dr. Grenier to come up, please.
All right. A motion to recommend a resolution to establish the Permanent School Building Committee as the Building Committee for the High School Asbestos Project for the purpose of requesting partial funding reimbursement. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Heath. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Grenier.
Please.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
You're welcome.
You're here for a couple of items, so we'll take care of this one first. I understand this is pretty regular.
Regular, but pressing.
Yes.
We have a CIP that was approved for five hundred, a little bit more than $500,000 to abate the asbestos at the high school. And what we need to do to begin the process is to fill out the EDO forty-nine, which is the Department of Administrative Services process. It's reimbursable. We will get fifty-four percent back. I think the CIP project is projected to be five hundred and eighteen thousand, so the amount has been approved. The full 518 was approved, but we will get reimbursement from the state. So, in order to apply for that reimbursement, the first thing is that a certified copy of the resolution by the Town Council to establish a building committee, authorize preparing schematic drawings, and authorize the filing of the grant application. So, we are hoping to do that work this summer, and we want to get a bid as soon as possible. So, if we could get that approval this month, we'd be able to put out the bid shortly after the Christmas break, and then go through the spring and set up the work for the summer.
Okay. So, Mr. Burr?
Just to mention, this is how it's been done in the past. It's essentially a vote on one application, and that's it.
Are there any questions on this particular item? Counselor O'Brye.
I know we've probably gone into an extensive discussion about this, but if I could just ask for a refreshing as to what it is that you're going to be doing?
Sure. I'm actually going to read the CIP. This is a project to complete removal of the non-friable asbestos from all schools. This is a solid form of asbestos that does not mix easily with air unless damaged. So, at the high school, you know there's asbestos. It's in the mastic, it's in the tape, it's in some of the tiles, but it is not yet crumbled, so it's non-friable. And so this is the, we hired Mystic Air Quality to come in. They identified where all of the asbestos is, certified that it's non-friable. And so, last year, I think, help me out, John, there was two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, that had been...
There were some leftover from earlier projects, and then we added to it, basically.
And we added. So, the council last year combined the two amounts, the leftover amount with new amount, and that got us to the 518. And that will be the final asbestos removal from the high, from obviously the old building. There's no asbestos in the new portion of the building.
Is it actually coming out?
No, no, it isn't. It is, it needs to come out, and, you know, we don't want it, we don't want it to come out. So, the idea is that we're going to remove this non-friable asbestos before it becomes a problem.
Gotcha.
And this is just to have somebody to accept the grant. Everything's been approved already.
Approved applying for the...
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Bordelon.
So, I just wanted to clarify, I do remember the CIP being on the RTM. So, there'll be no more, once this project is complete, asbestos will be fully completed at the school.
That's right, at the high school.
Because it's something that, looking at, I know this is going to the Building Committee, but looking at the Building Committee as a whole, when we decided to add on and build new at the school, it just seems that, for the record, it would be more cost-effective in the future when we do something like this, to do all this removal while we're building on to the school, and it's all under construction. So, I just, even though we're getting fifty-four percent back, I just think that we need to keep that in the forefront of looking at how we can effectively manage our time and also the money when you're adding on to a new school building. The old building still, besides this asbestos, has a lot of repairs that need to be done. So, I just think we should be ahead of that.
All right, seeing no further discussion, we will vote on the motion to, the agenda looks a little different because we had some trouble with the software, so I don't have the actual numbers to call, so the Building Committee High School Asbestos Project. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously.
Could I just clarify that? I think the council needs to appoint a committee, and we would recommend the Permanent School Building Committee. It'd really just be for oversight. We're going to, essentially, we're going to do all the work, all the coordination.
That is what the resolution called for.
Great, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are on to Counselor Franco for 5D, Board of Education Grant Approval Process on page twelve. Well, there's no motion made in advance. Dr. Grenier is just going to simply present the process to us. We'll get you next time. Dr. Grenier.
Well, we had a meeting among the Mayor, Granatowsky, Chairman Watson, and Moderator Evan, and we, and John, Burr, and I, and we looked at the provision both for approving grants by the Town Council and approving grants, Board of Ed grants more than $10,000 by the RTM. So, hopefully you all have got a document that laid this out.
It's on page thirteen of the packet.
So, we began our dialogue with the distinction between categorical grants and competitive grants. Categorical grants, all these grants are always in our budget, but categorical grants are grants that we get annually, we can rely upon them, we actually budget for them, and we get the grant because we are in that category. So, we get a special ed grant of a little bit more than a million dollars each year. We get a Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, the federal grants. So, the grants that come in every year, we actually put those right in the book, and we account for them. We identify the money. So, Title I is for remedial services, Title II is for professional development, Title III is for helping English language learners, and so forth. So, we didn't think it was appropriate to approve a categorical grant, because obviously we're always going to take a categorical grant. But what became clear in our dialogue is that competitive grants are a little different. Competitive grants are those grants that we go out and seek the award in competition with others. So, the most, the one that you probably heard the most about is the Teachers College. We have instructors come from Columbia University. That came to us through the Department of Defense Educational Activity, DODEA. So, DODEA, five years ago, put an RFP out and said, "We are willing to provide grants," depending upon how many children are in your school system, "for schools that have at least twenty percent of the children are military dependents." And so, any military school in the country, actually probably in the world, could apply. So, we applied, and we were awarded a million and a quarter, over five years, so about $250,000 a year. So, that money was also put in the budget. We identified that, and then actually, the next year after that, there was another RFP, and at that time it was for a math grant, and we applied for that, and received another, a million and a quarter, over five years. The important thing to know about the Teachers College grant, and any other grant of this nature, competitive nature, is that this is the fifth year, and we have greatly benefited from these current teachers, instructors from Teachers College coming to us from Columbia. But when the year is over, it's over, and we are a far better, and you can see that pretty clearly, or you will see that clearly when I share some of the data with you about our reading and writing scores. We're a better district, we know a lot more about literacy, thanks to the people from Columbia University, but when it's over, it's over. And that's how, that's how we write competitive grants. And I know through the dialogue, there were understandable concerns about, we take a grant and then we sign up. Basically, we incur the cost for future purchases or future payments, and that's not what we do. We often use grants to buy, we just got a U.S. Department of Agriculture grant where we're buying lots of produce, but we're buying more local produce because we bought a freezer. You know, and please God, the freezer will last for, everyone, freezers last. And so, that's what we try to do with grants. But, so, and then you see here that we kind of laid out the procedure, that when the board knows that, of course, I go to the board to inform them of any grant applications, but when we are notified, number two says, "Once the board is notified, I will contact the Town Manager, the Town," and we will lay out, you see on there, two of those bullets there, the name of the grant, the grant period, the description, whether it requires an obligation on the part of the town for future funding, whether there's a matching fund. Frequently, there's a matching fund, but it often comes out in kind, so it's not literally that we put money on the table, additional money. And then John will share that with the Town Council, the Town Council will act upon it and see if it's appropriate to accept that. And then ultimately, it will be referred to the RTM. I believe it will go to the RTM Education Committee, and then to the RTM itself, and we will be in accordance with the provisions in the charter.
Thank you. And thank you for working with the various bodies to come up with the policy and for presenting it to us this evening, and we look forward to having this implemented when you have your next grant come by. All right. So, we are on to 5C, Board of Education Administrator's Agreement on page fourteen, and we have no motion needed here either, according to the packet.
I just wanted to comment about that last discussion about the grant.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you had your hand up.
Sorry, I might have did it after you turned away. So, I just wanted, for clarification purposes, this came to be because this was something that we were not following in its entirety? Is that my understanding?
Well, you know, the charter, the charter has a provision, and so does the board, to approve all grants and donations. I think, well, I don't know, I haven't been here, that long, only for six years, but for the six years that I've been here, we went through the process that we went through. I think most people thought the RTM handled grants that went to the RTM, the board handled grants that went to the board, and the Town Council likewise. We were not, until we got the legal opinion, both from the Town Attorney and from our, from the board's attorney, we were not aware that this provision referred to Board of Education. I think that's the honest answer.
Okay, so this then puts us in to be following the charter as it states, with all grant money from Board of Ed moving forward, so that...
All competitive grant money.
All competitive grant money.
Yes. That's certainly a commitment from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Grenier. All right, so we are on to 5C, Board of Education Administrator's Agreement, and there's a very short description here on page fourteen. If you could just give us a rundown of why you're here and the purpose of your being here as far as this item.
When contracts are negotiated with certified personnel, meaning teachers or administrators, it is always referred to the municipal governing body, which may or may not take action. There's no need for an action. In this case, in July, it actually took us a little while to get this through, there were a number of holdups that went through the fall, but the administrators, it's actually a very simple contract, and we negotiated this without going to mediation. There are really two or three provisions. The first provision is salary provision. It's 1.9 percent for the first year, 2 percent for the second year, and 2.1 percent for the third year. And then the insurance cost sharing stays for the first year at 21 percent, then it goes to 22 percent, and then to 23 percent. And we eliminated severance pay for all new employees. And then there were just little legal leads about the Janus decision, but fundamentally, it was a 2 percent salary and increase in cost sharing. It is a relatively small group, it's about twenty-eight members, and we had the support of Attorney Dugas, and of course, we had competitive data. 2 percent is about 0.3 percent lower than the average, so we thought we certainly wanted to hold the line at 2 percent if we could. And the administrators agreed, and so they ratified it, they, the administrators ratified the agreement last month, the board ratified it, I guess, at the November meeting. I'm trying to remember what month I'm in.
December.
And so, so that's where we are.
Okay.
The provision is that, if I understand the law correctly, the Town Council can reject it, which would send us back to binding arbitration, or either take no action, table it, or have a vote, this is a little bit convoluted, but take a vote to take no action.
So, this says no motion is needed, so I would prefer to keep it simple. Mr. Burr?
I was just going to mention, I will occasionally send the council an excerpt out of the CCM data report that reports arbitration awards.
Right.
They run, they're running about 2 percent per year, so if you go to arbitration, this is about what you're going to end up with, and pay thirty or fifty thousand for the process on top of it.
Correct. All right, very good. Well, thank you for the explanations. Does anyone have questions for the superintendent? Counselor O'Brye and then Bordelon.
This is one, just one group, though, that you're dealing with. We still have, this group represents administrators or...
Just administrators.
Okay.
Principals, assistant principals, special ed coordinators, that's it.
Okay. Where are we with the teachers?
Teachers, we settled their contract last year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we will be getting the new contract in July.
Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon.
So, it states here, Town Council will review the document within thirty days of filing a copy with the Town Clerk, so when will we see that document?
It's been filed.
It was emailed to everybody.
Oh, so that's the, that's...
The clerk had sent a copy to everybody.
So, that's the final document?
Yeah.
That is the document?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure there was nothing. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
I think that's it, Dr. Grenier. We'll look forward to seeing you probably in January for the data report.
Yeah, all the data, and then hopefully we'll have a joint meeting and budget meeting.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, Counselor O'Brye?
I'm really looking forward to having you in one evening to give the report that you did at RTM.
It's scheduled.
It's scheduled.
It's scheduled.
Yep.
It is scheduled, and we're looking forward to sharing it with you.
Great, thank you.
He has some new information that he's adding to it that he just received, so.
Okay.
And, Mr. Burr?
I just wanted to ask, when you come back for that, can you also, we've had requests to present the Northeast Academy final report, just the highlights of it?
Sure.
Okay. On that to the agenda, if that's okay with the council?
No objection.
Great.
Thank you, Dr. Grenier.
You're welcome.
All right, very good. So, we are on to item 5D on page fifteen, and there's no motion on this one also, but this is the discussion of dual-language ballots. And with us this evening, we have Kristen Venditti, who is one of our registrars of voters, and Ms. Irene Weiss from the League of Women Voters. Did you want to come up, Ms. Weiss, or please, thank you? I'm not sure if your counterpart is here, Ms. Rogers?
She was held up at a meeting she was in, she's trying to get here.
Thank you. I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're here. So, there was a question regarding the ability of the town to produce ballots in multiple languages to suit the public's needs. And a bunch of people have been doing some research, so I'm just going to let you go ahead and give us what you know about requirements and mandates, and then options. If we're not legally mandated to do this, can we also do things in what you all would recommend? So, whoever wants to start, probably Ms. Venditti, Ms. Weiss?
Well, I know that depending on the percentage of specific race, the state only handles the Hispanic at this time, they require towns to produce both or multilingual ballots. We do not meet that requirement. However, from what I've understood, and I do not have an official word from the state, but from what I understood is that we are allowed to do it, we just have to decide to do it, I guess, and we're allowed to do it. There's no state mandate that says we cannot do it.
Okay. So, the, just, I'm going to just jump in here, the information comes from the most recent census data, and they do a cutoff, and I believe there's only like five municipalities in the state of Connecticut that are mandated to produce the ballots in other languages. And our biggest ELL group is Spanish-speaking, and it falls below the 20 percent mark for the census data. Would you like to add anything, or tell us what you know?
Hi.
Hi, thanks for coming out.
Hello, everybody. Yep, I'm Irene Weiss, I live at Seventeen Godfrey Street, Mystic, and I'm president of Legal Women Voters of Southeastern Connecticut. And I'll just read a quick statement about the league, which is that we're a nonpartisan organization of women and men that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. And so, I was pleased to be asked to look into this issue, because we're so interested in voter rights and access to voting and all that, and I didn't know until just now that it was 20 percent that needed to be the cutoff, but it's 20 percent of registered voters? What is the 20 percent of?
20 percent of your population.
That...
It doesn't have anything to do with registered voters, because we do not delineate any of the census information into the voter registration.
Okay, all right. So, I just have some thoughts that I'd like to share with you. I have, we have no position on whether you should do the dual-language or multi-language ballots or not, but in looking into it, a couple of pieces of information. One, I know that the citizenship test that people have to take has to be taken in English with very few exceptions, and there are very hard questions that people have to answer. So, that just seemed to me that if people go into a ballot and they have that much command of English, that they could probably not have much difficulty with voting for individuals. Also, it's important to know that any voter can ask for help, to ask for somebody to go into the ballot, to, we used to call it the booth, but you know what it is now, so long as the helper isn't their boss or their union... as the helper isn't their boss or their union shop steward or one of the candidates on the ballot. That was a little piece of information I thought was interesting. But you can, and I think it's important that people know that you can bring somebody with you, your sister, or your father, or your brother, or somebody to help look at what's on the ballot. So it seemed like voting for individuals would not be a problem for anybody that's passed the naturalization test. However, when there are ballot questions or referenda, that is a different story, and that's more complicated to understand, even if you've studied for the citizenship test and be able to pass that. But it also occurred to me that most English speakers, when they go in to vote for ballot, and there's a ballot question or a referenda question or something like that, most of us don't know what that's about either. And so I would encourage you to, however you make this decision, to put effort into educating the public, which we're happy to help with, about any questions that would be on the ballot too, in both English and Spanish and Haitian Creole or whatever other languages are being spoken in town. So I think that's about it for information I wanted to share, but I want you to consider that when you make this decision, and I hope that's helpful, and I appreciate being asked to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burton, did you want to jump in?
No.
Oh, okay. Town Clerk McCauser is here. Did you want to?
I have a lot of handouts.
Could you use the microphone, please?
I just-
Thank you.
I have a lot of handouts for just your own information, your voter rights, and I'm sorry, I'm late. You went a lot faster on your schedule. You know, some demographic information that you may already have, so I'll just hand these out to you. And also, last year, last fall's sample, this is not a sample, this is an actual ballot that Wyndham used, because they are one of the towns that required to have a dual-language ballot, so you'll have everything.
Thank you. Do any counselors have questions for either the registrar, or Ms. Weiss, or Madam Clerk? Counselor Franco?
So my question is, what percentage of our town are non-English speaking?
Thank you.
I also have a handout if you'd want it, but yes, I looked it up on the census. I looked it up on the census, and we are at 13.3%. New London is one of the ones that's required, they're at 33.1%. Norwich is 14.4, just to give an idea, I mean, Ledger, Eastline, Waterford, Old Sabre Girl, Lander Seven.
Of that 13%, are they all Spanish-speaking?
We cannot tell. It's just-
I missed the question, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that, please?
Of the 13.3% that are non-English speaking and Groton, I asked how many of those were Spanish-speaking compared to others?
We don't know that the Census Bureau just goes based on race, not on whether they speak English or not. There may be other races also that speak Spanish and don't speak English as well or as freely.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in for a second because you can only drill down to the county level. Like, I've been digging around, I've had my library and friends digging around, and the narrowest we can get is New London County. We can't find out for Groton what the languages are. We know that New London County has Spanish as the highest percentage, and then the next group down is Haitian Creole, but I think it's like .7, so it's less than 1%. So it's hard to know for Groton in particular, because it could also be Norwich, which has a high population. And Mr. Burton wanted to add something, then we'll go back to him.
I was just going to mention that it's the Department of Justice that takes the base census data and does the calculations. I have submitted a FOIA to the Department of Justice to ask if we can get those numbers, but there's been no response from them yet.
So let me clarify. So the 13.3% is the ethnicity?
Yes.
But it doesn't say whether they actually can read and speak, like, as their first language or second language or any of that? It's just, that's their ethnicity?
That's correct, but the state goes on those figures to come up with your 20%. They go based on your ethnicity, not on whether you actually speak it.
I see. And has anybody done a cost analysis to find out what the dual-language would be on the ballot?
Yes, we have. It depends on what you want. If you want completely separate Spanish ballots and completely separate English ballots, that will obviously double our cost. If you put the wording on there, yeah, if you put the wording on there, which is the sample ballot that she gave you, the sample that you can look at, obviously it's a real ballot, but-
If it's all on one ballot, that seems like it wouldn't be any more costly if you have the English with the Spanish right below it. You wouldn't have to produce a separate thing.
That seems like the simplest and most cost-effective way to do it, yes. But it will cost us more. We don't have an actual figure. It sounded like they don't want to do it at the place that prints the ballots. Yeah, I don't know, but he said it was a pain and that, you know, he didn't like doing it, basically, but-
Really? Well, is there more than one printer?
I'm sorry, we have, there's more than one, but we have to use a specific printer.
Right.
So our printer, who we use in New London, I think New London County, there's a specific translation that the Secretary of State's office approves. It's not like I can-
Right.
-hire a translator and do it.
Right.
And so the printer has to compare the language in English and then find it in Spanish and then make the, it's all digital, so it makes the digital copy, and, you know, it's a time-consuming. So what he said to me was that, well, paper's more expensive going into next year, and the labor costs will be higher for dual ballots. So he said you can pretty much double it for a ballot. So our poll ballots are 50, oh, sorry, poll ballots are 25 cents, I think, 27 cents a piece, so, and we order a lot.
Counselor Franco has more questions?
Okay, so I know for the, I believe it was the referendum, we put some kind of direction in both Spanish and English, is that correct? And it was-
That was explanatory text.
Okay.
We always have the instructions in Spanish and in English at every polling place. You explain that, right? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, there's requirements already with expla, not explanatory text, that's something separate. But when you go to the polling place, you see these large posters. It's in English and in Spanish, and there's also someone to explain, but then again, they're not interpreters, so that's, that would be, we'd have to see if we have to have an interpreter if we're going to be doing this. I don't know if we have to. But I did get a price on that. That's $30, $30.25 an hour.
So just for looking at this ballot, this will be my last question for now, but the only place that it's basically translating is in the headers where it says, like, Town Council, Vote for Any Four, or Board of Finance, Vote for Any Four. It's just there. It's not in the party side or anywhere else on here, is that correct? Or even the directions, or the, I'm sorry, the directions telling it to turn over the page?
Sounds bad.
But it's not like the parties don't translate too, right? So-
Well, that's, that's because it's considered a name, so they don't translate the person's name, the candidate's name, and they also don't translate the party names.
Okay. Thank you. I'll give anybody else more time to ask.
Counselor Boarder Lawn, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you guys for coming out. This is something that I had brought up over a year ago on the RTM, when I was on the RTM, and I think I spoke at Public Comment about it, and did some of my own research, and just looked around after I saw several people in certain sections of our town, in certain sections of our district, struggling to be informed on this. And after I had stated that, you know, I was told that the translation cards were up there, and after speaking to other people in the community that are of Spanish-speaking backgrounds, or some people that aren't necessarily, that's their first language, they may speak another language, but they're, they understand Spanish, so even better than English. And with that, you know, even the help of having the translation card in the, in the actual ballot box, I mean, I know for myself, if I had to read outside on the thing and then run in and vote, you know what I mean, like, that's, that's a little hard to do. So I was looking at a way to streamline this. And even in different states, they even move to having digital computers where you can put a headset on, and it will give them a preview, and they can sit, and there's a computer setup, just like you would do for somebody who has a hearing impairment or disability. Working in the medical field that I, which I currently do, by law, I have to provide whoever walks through that door their right to get medical attention and help, despite their limitations, and they're not required to bring anybody by law. So I have to phone up a system and translate, which takes a lot longer, but it must be done, and it's a just process, and it's important that not only quality of care, but in this process, that they're able to have a fair shot. With that, looking at New London, I did look over there at some of their things, I just feel it's a no-brainer. I think just because other towns aren't doing it, only five aren't, are. I think Groton can set a precedent and make it a priority in this town. I think it is an important issue, and I think it is a sensitive issue. Looking at that 13%, we don't know, but I think there might be some underserved legal voters that might not be coming out that we don't even know about, because they might feel intimidated by it, just reading it. You know, I understand even, we don't even use the numeric terms when we say Vote for Any Four counselors. The number four on our ballots is written F-O-U-R, not the numeric number four. Certain things can be misinterpreted, you know, a lot of our ballots, like this year, you had to turn it over, the directions are here. I think it's important, I think it's an important issue, that's why I had started this conversation and then brought it back up when I came to the council to investigate this. I think looking at 13%, if 20% is the standard, well, we're not far from that 20%, and we can do it. Looking at the cost, I, it's not much more. I agree that we should do it where we have it on here. I'm sorry to the guy that thinks it's a hard job to print these, but if New London's doing it and other towns are doing it, well, I'm sorry. That's all I can say to that. I think it must be done, and I think it should be done. And I think it opens up a proper communication channel, and it shows people in this town that they're just as important. Not only that, when you think of a child and you think of language barriers, children learn to speak first before they can read, and then they have to understand. As a person that comes into this country, and a lot of my friends that have, and even my, my grandparents came in from the islands and did not speak a lick of English, and then when they could speak, the reading and writing come secondary, so for comprehension purposes. The citizenship test is a no-brainer. It's like, you can study that, and it's the same every time, just about, and people become familiar, and they have other people that can help them with that. Other people from their culture might walk them through on how to get through that and comprehend it. But the ballot's ever-changing, and I think it's important to understand that just because one speaks English, the comprehension sometimes comes much later in some of the words and the reading. So just because you can speak English doesn't mean that you understand it fully. I think it's an important issue. I'd like to see this moved and the town council, you know, make this a priority and make this something that we offer to our voters.
I have a quick question for you. On the one sheet that's titled Presidential Election, I'm not sure who produced this. Did this come from the clerk or the registrar?
That's, that's my document. That's what I use for budgets.
So what is the far-right column that looks like it was added in?
That's individuals, how much an individual gets paid to do a job.
So are you saying that you would need an extra person, or, I don't understand what the purpose of this particular sheet was, I'm sorry.
Well, it just has the ballot amount on there. It just shows you what a, what a, an election costs right now.
Okay. So $8,000 for the ballot?
Just for information, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to address the layout of the ballot and the wording. That's set by the Secretary of the State Office, so I get a form that says Vote For, and then I plug in the numbers. So, you know, it might not be a bad idea to, to consider writing legislation exactly how you would like it, how you'd like elections that all towns offer. I mean, we do have, you know, you do have that option to look, to ask your legislators to submit bills if you're interested in. There are some election bills currently that have to do with ballots right now that are going to be going in, like early voting and that kind of stuff, right now.
Correct. That seems like more long-term, and this is, seems like something more of an immediate thing, that if we were, we so desired, it would be easier for us to push this through, to have the dual-language ballot. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Well, we have till what?
Counselor O'Grae?
We have until next November, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. And then Counselor Melendez?
How urgent is it really? I mean, we have till next November, right? That's the next time we have a ballot?
April.
No, April 28th, presidential primary.
Oh, April? Okay.
Counselor Melendez?
I was letting you know when you raise your hand.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Did you have anything else?
No, no.
Okay. Counselor Baumgartner, and then Franco.
Just on the record, I'd like to align my remarks with Counselor Boarder Lawn and just take the time to thank Ms. Weiss, Ms. Venditti, and Clerk McCauser for coming out. One question with respect to the previous election. The Counselor Boarder Lawn discussed some, you know, aiding and assisting ELL folks, you know, people who may not be fluent in English. What aids do they get, or did they get, in understanding the ballot if they may not even, say, the ballot isn't written in Spanish, you know, and they may know French Creole or, you know, another language? What resources do they have to understand what is on their ballot?
Well, as of right now, we try to employ Spanish-speaking workers. However, it's very difficult to get them, and a lot of the workers that have worked in the past have not come back after it to work another election. So we have a very difficult time finding anybody other than English-speaking workers. We have trouble finding them as well to fill up the polling place with, with the workers that we are required to have. We do not have any translators or any assistants in the polling place for anyone other than English-speaking at this point, where, you know, you can read the ballot to them and assist them with voting. Well, yeah, she just said that they can bring somebody in with them. Of course, they can. You can bring in anybody you want, you know, with the exception of what she stated earlier.
And irrespective of the census data, have you seen a trend where more and more folks are needing assistance navigating the ballot?
I don't think so. I have not seen a difference or an increase in difficulty. There's, there's always a lot of difficulty navigating the ballot for each polling place that we have. I wouldn't say that that's, you know, a high percentage, though, but there's a lot of people that need assistance, whether it's physical handicap or, you know, any other type of assistance that's needed.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Franco, and then Heath.
So, so in the elections, can we just have a copy that they can take that has the translation on it into the ballot box with them?
Yeah, they're allowed to take anything into the ballot box that they want. We can make copies of, you know, the, the sample ballots in Spanish and English and just allow them to take them. That's fine.
Like, maybe put them on a different card stock or something different so that they don't throw them in the machine afterwards or something?
Well, yeah, they would, they would be, you know, not allowed to go through the machine, and actually, any card stock that we try to use isn't the same. It wouldn't go through the machine anyway. So even if we put it on a card stock, but I was just thinking regular paper would probably work for that.
So this is something that we can just do in-house without having to send to the printers?
Yes, the only thing that we would have to do is have somebody to translate and create the document for us. Then we could copy it and have it in every polling place.
All right, and the translation, did you say, has to go through the-
Secretary of State's office.
Well, only for ballots.
They'll use their, for any election material, we have to have what's available through their office, my understanding. I can't accept, I did.
I did that explanatory text for the, for the referendum. I had permission to use that from the Secretary of State's office. So if we, if we do a translation, they'll sign off on it, hopefully.
So we can do a translation, make our own copies, and then have them at the polling places so that they can use them? Is that what you're saying? All right, thank you.
Counselor Heath?
So that was a fun idea, but in this sample ballot that you've given us, you've said that the state will, the Secretary of State gives us this verbiage, and then we just plug the names in. So there's no translation cost or anything on our end, there's just the printing cost.
What do you mean?
We don't pay to translate it, the Secretary of State. We don't pay to translate it, the Secretary of State does.
No, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, they're not going to translate it for us. They'll give us the spreadsheet that translates, you know, has the English on one side and translation on the other side and we put it together and then we send the ballot to them for approval.
Counselor Ober and then I wanted to say something.
I've got to take that a step further because I wasn't really understanding. Can we use this one that they have sent as an example? Or, wait a minute, this was, it says State of Connecticut Official Ballot and it has the Spanish on it. Why couldn't we use this and put our own people into it?
Well, you can, but no matter what, for every election, the language has to go and be approved from the Secretary of the State's. So she could use this as her template.
Yeah, use this, decide it up, send it up, get it approved and, you know, I know I'm adding to somebody's job, but it would seem like it would be a whole lot easier to get it approved if we use basically what they put out and just follow the lead, but we've got it there in Spanish telling you each step of the way.
Can I just add that this ballot didn't have any questions on it or anything like that? There was, it wasn't like a referendum with a whole paragraph. That's just different where we would have to have that translated, but something for our November municipal election where we have vote for any four, vote for any five, I would think that we could use the same template and it probably would have no issues going through the state.
Now, if we had a question that had to be answered, would it be, can you post anything in the booth?
We're not allowed to post anything other than a tamper law card in the booth itself. But the voter can bring in anything they want, so that's why we could put the sample ballot as a copy. You can bring political information into the booth, you just can't take it out of your pocket or your purse until you get into the voting booth.
Because my thought was if we had a question and you had it up there in English and you had it up there in Spanish, they could stand there, read it and vote. It would be a whole lot simpler than carrying something in, just post it in there.
I would have to check with the Secretary of State to see if they allow that. I know that they require us to post things outside the actual polling place, so there might be something that would stop us from being allowed to do that. But nothing's stopping us from giving them a piece of paper outside the entrance to the polling place that they carry in and can use and they can take as much time as they need to once in the booth.
It seems to me like when I go to vote, there seems to be some people that are very nervous about coming in to vote. And when you hand them a couple of things, they're not really, you know, it just confuses them. If we can hand them something that's relatively simple and if there is a question, post right in front of them the question in two languages, then I think it would be relatively easy for them to read it and vote rather than just not vote because a lot of them just wouldn't. But I think we have to keep it as simple as possible because, like I say, for a lot of people, they're quite nervous when they come to vote. They're not sure they're doing anything, everything right and they're probably not going to stand there at the table and ask the questions they might really want to ask, you know. So the other thing I was going to suggest, it might not even be possible, but you know, we have several high schools that teach Spanish and it would seem like we might be able to get some Spanish-speaking students that would be available on Election Day and have one at each polling place so they can easily step forward and translate for people.
I can definitely look into that, however, we have gone up to the schools in the past to look for anybody to work and we don't get any students very often. But if we look specifically in the Spanish class and maybe the teacher would be willing to give extra credit or something along those lines and they would get paid to work.
I think it'd be pretty impressive when they're going for their scholarships, if they could show as public, what do they call it, you know, they have to do public service, that they actually helped with an election, probably go a long ways on that. Maybe that's what you need to point out. And I expect we might be able to get a little help at the vocational school.
I've actually had some of my students volunteer with Ms. Weiss on Citizenship Day.
National Voter Registration Day, right?
Right. You wanted to say something?
I just wanted to underline what Counselor O'Gree was saying, that we here all, I'm sure, are not nervous about going in to vote, but there are so many people for whom it is such a formal, intimidating kind of experience that if people see information in the language that they understand best, that's a sign of welcoming, that's a sign of we really want you to participate in our government. And so I think that's a really, another point to consider when you're making this decision. And also that it's really important to get native speakers because some of us who speak Spanish and try to do voter registration with Spanish speakers but are not native speakers, when we have a native speaker with us, it's just so much better. And so if, you know, when you're looking for people to translate, that's a really good thing to look for.
So I just wanted to add that regardless of whether we decide to go ahead and request the ballot be done in dual language or we go ahead with what Counselor Franco had suggested, which is a non-official ballot but kind of a sample, I think the Secretary of the State will not charge us to translate, so I think we could send her the information and their office would be probably willing, they're not going to charge you to translate, to translate the information for us and then we could do whatever the council directed to do with that information. Counselor Parker.
So this information we received is only based on the 2010 census and we're ready to start the census for next year, for 2020. When would we expect to have that information back-ish?
Maybe later?
Which is not going to help us because it's not only just the Spanish, we would love to have it in other languages because we probably have a lot of people who've just moved here from different areas and we don't have all, I know several women I've met in the last few months are French Creole, so there's a lot of people coming into the area. So would it be possible to just to have what Counselor Franco suggested, have it in all languages, that way it gives everyone opportunity to be able to pick it up in French Creole or any other language that's sitting outside before they go in to vote? Because we're still limiting ourselves just to the Spanish-speaking, no offense, please do not take that wrong. I'm just saying we have a lot of people in different areas that need different languages and some Spanish is not the way it could be written, am I saying that correctly? That Spanish may be, it's not the, there's a proper Spanish that we learned in school compared to what the dialect that's being spoken.
I don't think you need to worry about the dialect, this is very, very simple language, it's, you know, there's, you know, numbers and reverse side, you know, that kind of thing, I don't think it's that complicated.
And Cantonese, because we have a lot.
Remember, they have to be citizens of the United States in order to register to vote.
That's true, but they, some are probably here and registered to vote not understanding that they, they were persuaded to register to vote.
Yes, that happens.
So it'll be easier to have different languages so that they understand, because you have some that are, the elderly learned how to vote without understanding what they're voting for.
Absolutely.
That's just my personal opinion.
Okay, we have Counselor Melendez, Bordelone, O'Gree.
I would just like to say, yeah, I do think it would be best if we had the English and Spanish on the same ballot, but what Counselor Franco was saying, I think would, and Counselor Parker, if you had third and fourth and fifth languages, you would have a non-official ballot, is there a way that you could, like, sort of print on demand? Do you have them all, you have like, say, 10 languages that you expect to show up and you haven't printed them and then if someone shows up, then you print it? Or you have X amount at each polling place, would you say? For, after Spanish, you would expect to be the second highest language showing up, but for third, fourth, fifth languages, how would you?
It would just be the preparation and getting the translation to be accurate. If we do that ahead of time, we would, again, just have to run it through the Secretary of State, so we would need to know ahead of time which languages we wanted to use and get those translated properly and then send them to the Secretary of State for approval. And then, you know, printing them doesn't cost a lot anyway, you know, but we can definitely, if we run out, we can print more and send them out to the polling places if we run out.
Counselor Bordelone and then O'Gree.
Thank you. Once again, thanks for all the groundwork you guys did to submit all these different papers and that shows the time and effort that you took. I know after, I had brought up the issue a year ago, then we did have it on the referendum, which was very helpful and that should just automatically be something that we do. And that might be a spot where we think of maybe having that in maybe French or extra available there, but at this point, I think just getting it into some type of, getting it into Spanish at this point, we have nothing. So that's, I think, the first step before we expand to a lot of the other languages is just to have something, because I do think down the road, if things are evolving and becoming more modern, this is not going to be an issue probably in 10 or 15 years, that's my guess or hope. Things will be more streamlined, electronic and the access and availability will translate right for you. But until that happens, I think that at least getting it into one other language like Spanish is very important. And I do like this sample ballot here where it's pretty, you know, lets you know that there's something on the back. And then the explanatory text for the referendum, you know, having it in the booth or definitely making sure that the referendum is translated down for people, you know, like as you stated, sometimes it's hard for even us to understand what they're asking for in that old language that they use, so. But I, once again, I support this, I think we need to move on something and I appreciate what you guys have done.
Counselor O'Gree.
Well, I'm basically just saying the same thing. I think if we could do this, it's a first step forward and I don't think we can recreate much more of that wheel at this point. I think if we do this and try to work on getting some people there to be of assistance, it'd be a real step forward and I think we could be proud of that. And as time goes on, we could work more with what Lawn has in mind. Maybe someday we'll be walking in and it'll be on a computer.
Yeah.
Then you can just pick your language, you know. Let's hope that that someday will be there. Who knows?
Well, it could be because the, sorry.
I'm sorry, that's all right.
Right now, our IVS machine, the assistance machine, is on a computer and it actually prints the ballot out for you. So that could be coming because this is so much nicer and easier, you know that when you circle the person that you want to vote for, you're wondering, is that machine going to read it, is it dark enough, is it too light, did I color it in right? The machine prints it out, they're big black squares, there's no question that you voted for them. So I really like the new IVS system, I'm hoping that they bring that out for everything.
Right. And my other suggestion would be too, that maybe, especially the legal women voters, maybe we could do some educational programs on TV first of the year where you actually take somebody through the steps of voting and then have them run it and run it and run it and I'm sure that we could get people to watch it. You know, if we could get the voice of that guy that used to tell me when I was little, get under your desk, you'd listen.
Great idea. Okay, so it looks like most of us in one form or another would like to move ahead with a dual-language situation. So then, Mr. Bird, are you looking for a resolution from us this evening to recommend a resolution or can we just provide direction to the registrar?
It's your choice.
What's the preference of the council? Would you like to just ask for direction rather than doing something formal at this point?
I think that we're in agreement as to where we want to go. I trust them completely.
Counselor Bordelone.
Is this something that we would have then affected for April?
I don't see any reason why we can't do that.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Would this need to be codified as an ordinance or simply as a resolution?
That's what I was asking, he said he doesn't think we need either.
Definitely not an ordinance, but, I mean, they're willing to do it, you don't need to do a resolution, it's up to the council if you want to.
I mean, two years from now, we get all voted out.
And then this goes away again.
I think it should be a resolution.
Counselor Heed just said he'd like it to be a resolution, would you like to?
Make a motion, Congress.
Make a motion to have dual-language ballots between Spanish and English.
Can you commit that to writing for me, please?
To approve a resolution.
Okay, so move for, you're making a motion for a resolution?
I'll make a motion for a resolution to have a dual-language ballot, English and Spanish. I say move.
Second.
Move by Heed and seconded by Bordelone and you're committing that to writing for staff to be able to type it into the minutes, we'll give them one second to do that. Any discussion on?
Are you proposing this for all districts or just?
Town of Groton, we represent the town of Groton, so.
Okay.
That's who this would impact. For Town of Groton elections. Would you like to read it, Counselor Heed, please?
Motion to have a dual-language ballot in English and Spanish for Town of Groton elections.
Recommend for a resolution?
Recommend for a resolution.
I think that's the language we need on this.
I say move.
Start again.
I'll make a, recommend, I'll recommend for a resolution to make a motion to have a dual-language ballot in English and Spanish for Town of Groton elections.
Second.
So move by Heed and seconded by Bordelone, does anyone need clarification before we vote on this? Okay, we have Counselor Franco, Melendez, Bordelone.
So clarification to the dual ballot that's just like the one you handed us, you're saying it won't cost more money?
No, I don't know if it'll cost more money.
Oh, I thought you said it would be about the same.
Not much more. No, it would just be cheaper than having a separate ballot, but I don't know, we'd have to look into it to see if. We didn't say it wouldn't cost anything, some of the councillors had said that it was possible that it wouldn't cost anything, it looks like it's already done. So we can look into exactly what you want and how much, if anything, it'll cost us. It's not going to cost us more for printing, it's just the creation of the ballot, which is.
I don't, I don't, I don't create the ballot, I thought I made myself, I mean, I put in the names and how many are voted for, it goes to the printer, the printer has a program that is approved by the Secretary of the State's office that actually translates it into Spanish, so, and it's added, that's how, and then it comes back to me for proof and then it goes to the Secretary of the State's office.
So where does the additional fees come in? Excuse me.
What they charge us.
To translate.
When they're creating the ballot, there may be a charge to change the wording every time we do it because it'll be different every time depending on who's running for election. So they'll charge us to create the ballot in Spanish and English because when they quoted us the price that we normally pay, it's just English only. So Spanish, there may be a charge, I don't know, but we can definitely look into it. If it's a significant amount of money, we can come back and let you know.
I don't think, I don't think what the printer told me is true, I want to see it in writing, he said double and I want to see that in writing.
Double?
Yeah, that's what he told me, but I want to see that in writing.
So are we sure we want to go forward with this to double the price of printing?
So, so I just want to jump in, we have a bunch of councillors that want to speak, I would say that the actual translation isn't going to cost anything. The printer generating something with more ink on the page, I can't imagine that that would be double what it was originally.
No, that's not, the printing, we're not talking about the printing.
Right.
Whether they print, you know, 50 words or one word on the page, it's the same amount.
Right.
If it's a double-sided ballot, then they charge us for double-sided, but we're just talking about the translation and like Counselor O'Gree said, that once we translate the vote for anyone or whatever, hoping that we can just use that as a sample in the future, but we can check into it and get back before the resolution comes for the council so that it's not official until then and we can try to get a price for what it'll cost for our printer, ballot maker.
Counselor Melendez, Bordelone and then Parker.
Just to clarify, we can only use the printer that we have, like, there's no way to use any other kind of printer.
State mandates, there's actually two printers that we could use that the state allows, but everybody uses the same one pretty much and we've used them for years. The other... The other business that offers the ballot is the one that we get all the machines and we get the memory cards programmed from. So we can also check with them if it's easier and then find out what we'd have to do to switch printers if, you know, the first printer's not willing, which I'm sure he would be. And then we can check with the other one and see if there's a difference in price.
Okay. And just for the referendum, should we, for the resolution, should we add specifically that also referendums should have a translation just to be?
Do that every, every time we do a referendum.
Town of Groton elections, does that, does elections cover referendums, Madam?
That would, that would. But normally, when the council does, approves referendum question, you could add that to the resolution. You could say, you know, you know, you know what I mean? So council approves the writing of the explanatory text in English and in Spanish every time you do it. I mean, that would be the right thing, I think.
If, the word elections, does that mean referendum to you as well?
Technically, yes.
Is that what you needed to know?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. But I just, I just, to be clear, because I just think.
We've got one going like this, and we've got one going like this.
Well, I was just thinking that referendums, they have separate laws in the books, so they're not considered in an actual election, but they are called elections in a lot of the laws. But referendum have different laws that we have to follow for those. So it might not be, you know, an apples-to-apples type case.
Can we just add it to be clear?
So that's what I was going to suggest because we were concerned if we're gone in two years, then what will happen? So would you like to amend?
I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution to add also referendums after town elections.
Second. Making your paper look messy.
My handwriting looks.
By Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner. Okay, so it's going to read, recommend for a resolution to have a dual-language ballot in English and Spanish for Town of Groton elections in referenda. Is it referenda? Referenda?
Referenda.
Referenda. Counselor Melendez, is that how you rounded it? Okay. All right, so that's, that's what we will vote, but we have more people that want to discuss, so we'll go Bordelone and then Parker.
That actually was addressed. That was my thought as well, is adding that in there. So I think that's great. I think it covers all bases. And what are the name of the companies you guys are going to be contacting?
Atkins is the one that we use now. It's A-D-K-I-N-S.
Yep.
And then there's also LHS, and that's the name of the company, those letters.
And this is also the companies that other towns use as well?
Yes.
Okay. So like Wyndham would be, as this example ballot, they use one of those companies. They use Atkins. Okay, perfect. So, all right, thank you.
Counselor Parker.
I'll ask that. Thank you.
You're good? Okay. So I think everybody's talked multiple times, so I will read this one more time and then I'll call for a vote. So it says, recommend for a resolution to have a dual-language ballot in English and Spanish for Town of Groton elections in referenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you, ladies, very much. We appreciate all your work to make the voting process easier for people of Groton. Excellent. Does anyone need a break or do we want to keep going? Keep going? All right, on to 5E. We are on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can we ask everyone to turn their cellphones off, please, or turn them down from the audience?
Yes. Thank you. Could everyone please silence their cellphones? Thank you very much. We are on to, I believe, Counselor O'Bree, since you moved the last one, Counselor Heed. So we're on page 16, and this is the Assistant Assessor Job Description on page 16. Counselor O'Bree, please.
Read the whole thing?
The motion at the bottom.
Okay. Motion to recommend a resolution approving the Assistant Assessor's job description. I so move.
Second.
Moved by O'Bree and seconded by Bordelone. And if you would just introduce yourselves for the people at home, please.
I'm Cindy Landry, Finance Director.
Bob Zagawi, Assistant Health Manager and new Resources Director.
Recently, we had a resignation of the Assistant Assessor in the Assessment Division, and when this occurred, then it gave me the opportunity to look at the job description, which was created in 1985 and has not been updated since then. And you can imagine all that has changed in that office in the last 34 years. So basically, what I've done is I've tried to update the language and make the new job, the revised job description reflective of the duties that this position is actually doing. So I have, you have both the revised and the original from 1985. Some of it is just formatting. I took it from a narrative format to make it more of a bullet format, easier to read. So if you have questions about the two of them, I'll be happy to try to answer them for you, but it's really just to make it reflective of what the position after 34 years has evolved and is doing.
Thank you. Counselor Parker, Counselor Franco, and Bordelone.
So this went from salary to hourly?
No, it really did not. We noticed that that job description from 1985 said salary, but we believe that was a mistake. We've gone back as far as we can with the records, and that position has always been an hourly union position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Franco.
Over the past couple of months, we've had discussions on filling job positions and how hard it is to be economy the way it is. So one question I had was the sort of, one of the, they're supposed to be certified Connecticut Municipal Assessor.
Yes.
Is this something that they can acquire on the job? Are you willing to take somebody without that?
We would prefer not to because it's a very long term to get that certification. It takes quite a few number of years to get that, and we would prefer to hire someone with that certification. And there, I'll agree with you, there are not a lot of candidates out there either that have it or willing to move.
Right. I just think it'll limit you.
I would really prefer, because this position is the backup to the assessor and takes over in the assessor's absence, so I'd really like this position to be certified too, so that it is completely, has all of the knowledge and education that the assessor has and can step in in necessary. I understand.
Oh, definitely. I just don't want to limit you if.
I appreciate that.
It's hard enough as it is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Bordelone.
It seems like a lot of these job descriptions have come before since I've been on here so far. Is there a process in which we update some of these or we wait until they're vacated and then we update them? I was just curious.
It depends. Sometimes, a lot of times we do when somebody's coming in, we'll change job description when we're looking for that. But there are other times when there are job descriptions out there that we have to update because a certain person's position has changed and they're already in the position, so we have to make changes there to reflect the duties that they're currently in.
So this one's from 1985? The one person was in this position since 1985 or no? No? Okay.
No, this one's in there.
So I just, I just encourage the town to be a little bit more transparent and proactive in updating these job descriptions so that they do accurately reflect current demands. I, you know, this is like the third one, I think, that's come so far that I've seen in the short time I've been here. So it seems like it might be an ongoing issue, so as a housekeeping thing, I would think it'd be something that we want to, because I don't think, like I said, the person was in this position for 35 years. With that, looking at the physical demands, you know, you might have to lift a heavy book or binder from time to time, but I am concerned that this is limiting some people under the American Disability Act. I know, I know people that work in finance and directors of universities and big, bigger municipalities in this that are handicapped that cannot sit, stand for, or stoop down, but also are wheelchair-bound, but talk and can articulate in a manner in which they can actually operate and function better than some of us. So I'm just curious as to, maybe this should state something to the effect of, I mean, case-by-case basis or something to open that up so that we're not limiting somebody in a wheelchair or under a disability. That concerns me.
Well, we always do leave ourselves open for accommodations anyways. That's, we're not going to say to someone they can't come in and have an interview or, you know, we look at their credentials when they come in.
Right.
At that point, we're going to be looking at, you know, what they need. If they, if they're better than anybody else, we're certainly going to make accommodations.
Just want to make sure that's not going to limit under that guidelines. Thank you.
Just to mention, that is why we have that accommodations section.
Just want to make sure.
Make it clear.
Counselor Heed.
I'd also just like to pipe in on that and say, if you don't have it in there, sometimes you have people who show up and they don't, they then complain afterwards. So you have to make sure that this is concise and it includes everything and, you know, as long as you've got the accommodations, maybe move that up above work environment so it flows better. But other than that, I think it needs to be there.
Well, we're also acting very, I take a lot of courses right now with ADA through the state, so basically, a lot of these questions we have when we're going through these exercises, it gives me a chance to have a good answer because the region does an excellent job of being a resource for us.
All right. Counselor O'Bree.
I'm very proud of the fact we got rid of the crawling. I think we're really coming up.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll call for a vote on the Assistant Assessor Job Description. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are on to 5F. 5F, which is on page 20. Counselor Bordelone, this is the adoption of an ordinance to regulate single-use plastics and polystyrene food service.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to recommend a resolution to adopt an ordinance to regulate single-use plastics and polystyrene and food service at food service establishments. I apologize.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wow. Who do I pick? Everybody's seconded now. I'll go O'Bree. Excellent. Could you please introduce yourselves, gentlemen? Bordelone and O'Bree.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services.
Bruce Offgren, Planner One, Office of Planning and Development Services.
Thank you for coming here again to talk to us about this. If we have questions, I'm hoping that we've had a lot of our questions answered. We've had some time to digest everything. Are there any last-minute questions? I know Counselor Parker. Any last-minute questions before we vote on this? Counselor Parker.
Well, did we, did we mention the subdivisions? Is this applying to all the subdivisions or is it not? I don't think, I thought we discussed that last.
It was stated at the public hearing that the intent was to not include them, I believe. So in order to change, I'd have to go back to a public hearing process.
But I don't.
Did you add, was that in there, John?
We have not added that. We have not met with the council since the public hearing, so if there are any items, we didn't add that in the ordinance, but that was the intent of the ordinance.
Actually, you could go either way because it was originally that and now it's that. So you could go either way on it.
Okay. I think the intention was to not have it apply to the subdivisions.
That's what was stated at the public hearing.
Correct. So, so Mr. Burt, how do we, how do we handle that as far as voting this evening?
Well, you can, I think, just make that part of the motion.
Okay.
But whether you do or do not want, I mean, as it stands, it would include them and your motion would need to say that they are exempted.
So Counselor Parker, would you like to amend the motion to, I'm not sure we stand on this, but would you like to amend a motion to specifically state that it does not include subdivisions?
Correct, because my concern is that we have a person that's going to go out and inspect the businesses, an enforcement officer, when there's already enforcement officers in different areas, and I just don't want to clash.
Would you like to make the motion?
I make.
You can just add to the end of that if you'd like.
To recommend a resolution to adopt an ordinance to regulate single-use plastics and polystyrene at food establishments with the exception of subdivisions.
Excluding, is that clear enough?
Let's make it clear. Just so we don't catch fire districts, or let's make it clear that it's Groton, Longpoint and the city.
Okay. With the excluding the city of Groton and Groton, Longpoint.
I will second that. And I'm going to read it just for clarity to make sure I got what your intention, Counselor Parker. So the new motion is to recommend a resolution to adopt an ordinance to regulate single-use plastics and polystyrene at food service establishment excluding the city of Groton and Groton, Longpoint.
Yes.
Okay. So that's the motion that's on the floor right now. Okay. Is there, Counselor Heed?
Just a quick statement of clarification. When we approached this ordinance, I was not under, I was not aware that we could make it town-wide. And I guess as learning experience, now we know. So if we were going to make it town-wide, we would be talking with the city in Groton, Longpoint in advance so we don't sort of surprise them.
Right.
But whenever we have ordinances, they can be town-wide unless we exempt. Is that right? Any ordinance?
Yes, correct. However, they can then do their own ordinance to supersede what we've done. So you could write one that included the city and they could basically write one that said, "We're not going to do it." So, so that's why you would want to include them, yes.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Counselor O'Bree.
When we had the public hearings and we were listening to people, the thing that kept coming up was the plastic straws. And at that time, I had asked that there be a period of time, a length of time, before that provision would become part of this, or it would be part of it but with a different date. And maybe I didn't push enough that night that we had more conversation, but that was what many of the people that came to the public hearing were talking about, the difficulty with the straws. Is it possible to make it so the straws become effective in six months? That's about what they had asked for.
It's all set for six, all of them are set for six months after adoption right now?
And then Section 10-194, Prohibited Acts B, on page 23.
Which number again?
Page 23. Over there. 10-194, Prohibited Acts B is the straw thing, and the last part says, "Unless a plastic straw is specifically requested by a patron."
Okay. Sorry. Thought I read that correctly.
And I skipped Counselor Baumgartner. I apologize.
I wasn't, but that's all right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Bless me.
I'll come back. So it was Counselor Baumgartner originally that I had skipped. So Counselor Baumgartner, go ahead.
Rachel.
Franco, Heed. And back to O'Bree.
Did you have something?
He has. Counselor Baumgartner has a floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Clarifying question. In Section 10-196, Enforcement Violation Penalties, A, this ordinance shall be enforced by the enforcement officer. Mr. Burt, the enforcement officer.
It would be the zoning enforcement officer.
So in the case where in the town, for example, there are multiple zoning agencies or entities that, where those districts do not necessarily align neatly with the subdivisions. Case in point, NO Inc. has its own separate zoning enforcement. How would the ordinance be applied in, with that respect in terms of enforcement?
The zoning enforcement officer still has authority for building codes and the blight code throughout, even I think everywhere but Groton, Longpoint and the city.
Correct. And the language in the ordinance is very clear with that.
Yes. We, if the, if the council adopts the ordinance as it's recommended right now, we would have just one insertion that the ordinance does not apply to the city of Groton and Groton, Longpoint, but otherwise, it would be enforced by the zoning enforcement officer.
Thank you, Colonel. This is not a zoning ordinance. This is a separate ordinance that would apply everywhere but the city and GLP.
But nothing could preclude us from including in this ordinance that we call for those subdivisions to adopt similar ordinances.
I don't think you put it in the ordinance itself, but you certainly.
Or resolution.
Or a resolution, certainly.
It would be my hope that both as a city of Groton resident and certainly as a town counselor who represents Groton, Longpoint, that similar legislation is adopted in those communities if we're looking to make the biggest impact. And I think it would behoove this council to, you know, encourage our counterparts, who we've maintained very strong relationships with, and making it very clear to them that there are folks who live in the city as well and Groton, Longpoint, who would like this ordinance to be enforced or adopted in those respective subdivisions.
I would say in January, we have our joint town, city council meeting. That would be a good topic to broach at that meeting.
February, isn't it? There's, it's not January. February 6-ish. Whatever the first.
Is it February? Okay, thank you. So, did you need to finish, Counselor Oberly?
No, I was just wondering in here where it says it doesn't stop for six months. Where am I?
Right at the very end.
At the very end?
Section 10-198, effective date. Ordinance shall become effective six months after adoption.
Effective date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So now we have Franco Heed, and then I think Oberly's done. So can, we got a.
I just wanted to give the actual date of the joint meetings. It's February 4th.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Can we go to Section 10-195 exemptions? In Section A, it has, I don't know exactly what a door hanger bag is. Can you clarify?
If you were real, that you'd know.
Would you like to?
I hate to sound redundant. It's a bag that hangs on a door. You'll see plastic bags that sometimes people will literally hang on doorknobs.
To put, you know, paper documents, information to protect it from the rain. Very similar to a newspaper kind of thing, but hanging.
It's got the little veil cut in it.
Yeah. At one time, they might have put these things called phone books inside those and hung them on doors.
Actually, my oil bill comes in that and they hang it up my door.
So in Section B of that one, which states the bags provided by pharmacists or veterinarians to contain prescription drugs and other medical necessities, I'd also like to include in there medical and dental facilities as well, as especially in a medical facility, there may be a need to remove soiled clothing in a plastic bag to take home with you when you leave the facility possibly. So dental and medical, because there's certain things you may want to put in a plastic bag to leave with. So in Section 10-194, Prohibited Acts, so Section B is about the straws. And I just want to clarify because this was a topic of discussion by a particular business. And I want to clarify this. So people with ADA issues, we do not want to single them out to have to acknowledge that they may have a disability. So it is simply where somebody now has to just say, "I would like a plastic straw." I don't have to say, "I have a disability." We don't have to, you know, put a title or anything on anybody. So basically, what we're saying is if McDonald's, you know, the big stores that serve a massive amount of people, Dunkin' Donuts and Taco Bell, KFC, those type of stores, they basically would just have to, I don't like to say the word, but train their customers to order differently.
We had this conversation today, and I think if somebody at the service counter basically said, "Would you like a plastic straw with that?" Yes, I would.
Okay. But they cannot leave the plastic straws out for automatic grabbing and going.
Correct.
They're not out in the lobby for just taking.
Correct.
They would actually have to come up and say, "Can I have a straw?"
Yes.
My question also is, I don't think we can require a store to have paper straws. We can't require them to have them in stock, can we?
I don't think we can require them to have them in stock. No.
So let's just say if you go to McDonald's and you don't want a plastic straw, and they say, "Well, I want a paper straw," we don't have to mandate that they keep them in stock, correct?
Correct.
So, so some of these bigger stores just have to simply, they can ask if they would like one, or just their, their customers can just start saying, "I'd like a plastic straw with that."
I do have a fix for that if the council wanted to go down this road. And right now, the way the ordinance reads, the draft ordinance, when we, the section on plastic straws, we are prohibiting plastic derived from either petroleum or biologically based polymer such as corn or other plant sources. And the reason for that is even those biologically produced, the plant or corn sources, still have some polymer in them. Although they're made out of a lot of corn or plant-based product, the town could prohibit across the board all straws that are 100%, 100% plastic, but allow those plant-based ones, which will have less plastic, but it's still not paper.
Which also brings up, franchisees can only get what the distributor, you know, their main corporate office sends them. It's not usually optional. It's, they get what is on their choices. It's either maybe a certain plastic or a paper maybe, just say. I mean, they don't have the option to go out and make their own contracts and order, you know.
I don't know. I don't own a franchise, so.
So what, that's basically how they work. They don't have an option. They get what the corporate office has and that's their only option. They can't go out and buy on their own.
Well, as someone pointed out to me today, I think on the Cape, they prohibited all plastic straws. There's a lot of franchises on the Cape.
And if they have a whole area, that'd be one thing, because they would probably, as a business, they would contract and purchase in massive bulk to take care of all those stores. But if you're doing it just here in Groton, their price increases are going to be higher because they're not buying in such bulk for just this one store. And their distribution centers may be different. Just from, I'm just thinking of this from a business perspective and the increase that they would have to see. And I'm extremely happy that Dunkin' Donuts is turning over to paper cups because honestly, I don't know, their increase in price would probably be astronomical compared to just getting their styrofoam at what they get, what they currently have, if they didn't do it as a whole corporation. So, I'll allow others to speak, but thank you.
Counselor Heed and then Bordelon.
Well, I have something else, but I think I'll step back to the straws for a second. I think that there's a certain approach that some companies can take. Either they can choose to be part of the solution or they can choose to resist. And if they choose to resist, they're going to focus on the cost of change or the challenge of change and understand the franchises are limited. But there's opportunity in that. You can start selling reusable bags if they show up, if somebody calls in and makes big order. They can start asking them to bring a bag or a box. If it's, if it's a matter of straw, you can sell reusable straws, reusable cups, and you have your branded marketing on the outside of it so that you get to advertise every single time they use it. And on top of that, the more communities that do this, the more the franchise company, the parent company will have to respond. And also, if you consider the cost of changing over, I think, what if there's doing 70,000 cups of coffee a day and it's a penny per straw, it's $780. So it's not a huge amount of money. But beyond that, I'll drop the straws for a second to go to the exemptions. Sorry, not exemptions. Hardship variance, letter A. The town manager may grant a temporary one-time variance from the requirements of the article only after determining that, you know, there's hardship based on a certain circumstance or blah, blah, blah. How long would that temporary variance be?
Letter C.
Letter C.
Oh, 90 days. Gotcha. I read it, I promise. All right, thank you.
Counselor Bordelon.
Thank you. I also experienced the Cape Cod thing when I was down there, and they're doing it, and it's doable. I guess we have to take a step back. Why are we doing this at all, then? Why are we doing this? We're doing this because we're trying to, you know, not only protect the lives and loved ones of this area in the coastal community and the sea life and everything around us, we're making a movement and saying that we stand with this as a town. And, and the purpose of this is to not see what necessarily, look, the cost that you have on one's health as a result of all these hazard things, if you chalk that up, you can't put a price tag on that. And you can, and it's at a large cost. So it's, when I think of franchises, and I understand some people came with all due respect to them in the sense of, you know, they're franchise owners and there's a different philosophy, but other ones that operate may be different than those that have come out, they're big corporate, they're making. I'm more worried about the local business level. The franchises in Cape Cod are doing it. You go in there, I got a paper thing with an egg, like, I mean, everything is like that there. And it was amazing to see. So I just want to keep in mind, we talk about money, but no one's talking about the cost of our health and our concern and our coastal community and the impact it's going to have if we don't make action and make a change in this town. I'm completely for it. I also would like to consider looking at charging 10 cents for paper bags. I would like to amend this to make it say such, that I think towns, I think that the 10 cents, once again, would go to the, wouldn't go to anybody else to collect it. I think the 10 cents would go to the business owner. The business owner then could then charge that and have the money then go back into their business, and there would be a cost savings for them by charging that. Because what happens is, is we create a dependency. When we give free paper bags, then you start to, that becomes a problem. If we remember correctly, we had paper straws and we had paper bags, and this is why we're in the position we are in. So I would like to consider a motion to also, one of those other recommendations that had come down, is to charge 10 cents for a paper bag.
I just want to add something really quickly before anybody else says anything else. Any significant changes send this back to another public hearing, which slows the whole process. So just keep that in mind. And Mr. Burt, wanted to speak as well.
I was just going to say the same thing, yeah.
Okay, so just bear that in mind.
It hasn't been brought up in the public hearing.
So for clarification, we brought up, we added dental in here and other things.
I believe that's probably close enough to the language in there, but this would be something totally not discussed.
So in order to get the 10 cents on the paper bag, it'd have to, then, just clarify one more time?
Go, you have to go back to a public hearing because it's a significant enough change, I believe, I'm not an attorney, but I believe it's a significant enough change that it would have to be sent back to a public hearing, which puts us back another two months.
Can I get clarification on that before we make a final vote on this?
Mr. Burt? There's no second.
Second. I've got, I've got one of our attorneys out there. I can, I can run it by him, but that's what Eileen Duggan has told me on this in the past, on any of these ordinances.
I just think it's interesting that we can add dental.
Excuse me, hold on, please, hold on. So Counselor Bordelon, do you have further, you want, all right, give it a minute. Mr. Burt is going to check with Attorney Callahan. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess, please. Okay, we are back from recess at 8:21, and we have staff that would like to speak. Mr. Burt first, and then Mr. Reiner.
Sure. I did confer with an attorney during the break. For something significant, especially creating a financial obligation, he believes it would need to go back to public hearing. For something like the, what Counselor Franco was discussing, that's in a similar vein to what's in there, plus it's actually making it easier by adding an exemption. That would be okay as it stands?
Okay, Mr. Reiner.
So also, just as a reminder, during this process, and I can't remember if it was at the public hearing or one of the workshops that we had, the Conservation Commission had said that they will be happy to review this ordinance nine months to a year from now, look at the progress and bring a recommendation, some type of report back to the council in that period of time. So if there are other items that we want to add or change, that's something we certainly can visit, revisit.
Thank you. And I would just like to remind the council that staff is here just doing what we ask of them, and they're not in an adversarial role with us. They're here to support us. Okay, so we are back to Counselor Baumgartner.
And I'd like to remind the council, it is okay to have fun. It is okay to ask questions. This is a great day. We've been talking about this for quite some time. And ultimately, if this council agrees to pass this ordinance, we could argue across the state that this is going to be the strongest plastics reduction ordinance in the state. And I think there's something to be said about that, that there's something to be proud of in stating that. And so when we're seeking to clarify questions, it's only because we care so much and we want to do this the right way. And I know we, each of us, you know, who have been emphatic in their support of this ordinance feel the same way. And so, just to clarify, and for council discussion, whether or not that nine to, nine-month-to-one-year review is appropriate, if we should look to expedite that in light of the fact that we cannot make any, or should not make any significant changes to the proposed ordinance. So the review will to do, to make additions potentially down the road. Does this council think it would be, should we look to expedite that, expedite that timeline?
Well, we have to bear in mind that it doesn't go into effect for six months. So if you do six months and then you take it to nine months for review from the date of inception, yeah, that would be, I don't have any problem with that. Rather than a year, you would like to bump it to nine months.
If the council agrees to that.
Mr. Reiner.
And that review time isn't something the council has to decide upon tonight. That's something, again, going along your theme, staff is here to help you and give you guidance. If the ordinance is passed, it goes into effect six months. At that point in time, three months, six months after it's in place, we and the Conservation Commission, I'm sure all of you, are going to be hearing from people about, hey, is this working well, is this not working? And at any point in time, you can ask the town manager, hey, can you get staff and the Conservation Commission to start looking at this item as soon as possible? And that's something we can do. We don't want to put timeframes of when we're going to revisit this in the ordinance. I just put that out there for clarification so that with all of our ordinances and regulations, we're always looking at them. Are they working effectively? So that's just out there for your clarification, but also to make you aware that we'll be keeping an eye on this.
And just to clarify, I'm well aware in fourth, where I was asking the council if, you know, that's, there's a consensus there before we look to, you know, make any additional motions, or as I know, there was a point of contention earlier with whether or not we can include certain items. So just to kind of set the stage.
So I think everyone has spoken that wishes to speak on this. And I think we're pretty clear on where we are with this. We can't make any significant changes short of sending it back to another public hearing. So I would like to call for a vote on the adoption of an ordinance to regulate single-use plastics and polystyrene food services amended by Parker and Granatowski. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Are you opposed or abstaining? Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Parker. So moved. All right. We are on to item, thank you, gentlemen, very much. We are on to item 5G. This is just the cow. We still have to go to council, so don't get too excited. And RTM. Item 5G, RTM Town email accounts on page, yeah. Yes, I had my label in the wrong spot. On page 26, there's no motion. So Mr. Burt, would you just like to address this briefly?
Sure.
And you had sent an email about this.
Yes.
To all of us, well in advance of the meeting.
Don't want to stay?
We'll see you at the council meeting. Good night. Mr. Burt.
Sure. I believe it was Counselor Bordelon originally asked for us to look at hitting town email addresses for, for RTM members. We did look into that. The cost would be a little under 2,000 per year for the licenses. I talked to Brian Hancock, he's got someone out in maternity leave, which does free up a little bit of money. So if we wanted to do it now, we wouldn't need a budget amendment. We could do it likely on existing dollars, but really not much to it. It's a little bit of staff time to maintain those and then about 2,000 a year.
I checked with Moderator Eben, and she said she would be interested, dependent on the cost, how expensive it was for the town, but given that there may be FOIA requests, that it was, it would be nice for them to have the same kind of email that we have. So I just wanted to share that.
And I do have one FOIA request going on where I had to reach out to the RTM members. And it's hard to get 41 or 30, high 30s in responses. So I'm doing follow-ups and then, hey, if you don't, you know, I've got a good thing given deadline, if I don't hear from you, I assume that means there's nothing, you know, in terms of FOIA, though this is the first time it's happened in two and a half years with RTM, but it would be helpful in this instance. It'd be done in a few minutes, so.
Is there, it sounds like you're interested in doing this.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good to have, you know, up to the council. You know, you could also, there's different options. You could ask who wants those town ones. You could opt to have it or not. There's different things you can do. I'm just saying, in this instance, it would have been nice.
Right. So we have Counselor Heed and Counselor Bordelon who'd like to speak on this.
I think, well, personal opinion, I think there are plenty of emails out there where you could get a separate email just for RTM. If I just go back to the two and a half terms that I spent on the RTM, I could probably count on my hands one time, like one, five times, basically, one hand, the number of emails I got to my RTM account. It really wasn't, it's nothing like the town council emails that we get in. So $2,000 per person just to me seems a little bit prohibitive.
Total. That's a total.
Oh, oh. I would try.
Counselor Bordelone?
Yes, I think this is a, also being on the RTM, I did get more than five emails just even from people in the town, or corresponding, or whatever. And I just think that if you're going to have volunteers for the town, it's appropriate to have everybody under that same umbrella, as you were speaking, in regards to the FOI issues or whatever. Not only that, we've had RTM members that have just gone ghost and haven't been around, and it'd be nice to, once that official swearing in is, you can actually cut that line of communication for that person. When you open up a private email, as I'm experiencing, I haven't been able to cancel mine fully. I'm trying to notify everyone, and I'm still getting things on my personally-created RTM email. So now I'm having to manage that, and I just think it would make it more streamlined and more professional and more appropriate to be under, you know, one umbrella as a municipality and elected body. It just makes sense.
Counselor Obray?
Now, if, I'm trying to understand this. We're saying that all our information will be emailed to them. No?
No.
What do we?
So what this, what this would do is it would set up, like you have L. Obrey@Grattan-CT.gov. There would be S. Eben@GrattanCT.gov, so that if anybody needed to contact her on official RTM business, it could go to that channel, which the town would have access to. And if another request came in, the town could very easily go and pull all the information they needed directly from there, rather than having to depend on you to go to your personal email and try to dig through everything and find anything that the town might require.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
We have software that can, you just put the parameters in, and it's pulled up in a couple of minutes, if we have the town emails.
Thank you.
I'm kind of torn, because 20 years and we were never FOIA'd once. But these are weird times. So I appreciate.
It didn't, it didn't tell me there was one other time that she was involved with. So it's twice apparently in the last few years, 10 years or so.
But I mean, it's different now, this, just this past few years, things have gotten a little contentious. Counselor Franco?
So I can recall sitting with a meeting with Mr. Hennig, who's representative for FOI from the state. And in this meeting, he had suggested that members in towns, whether you're even on a board, or a committee, or RTM, or what have you, that you open a separate email and try and just keep your town business for that. And he said this happens all over the state. This is how it's done. He, also, if an FOI request is made, correct me if I'm wrong, you will want to check the town email. Also, you'll want to check that person's, that person should check their personal email. They should check their cellphone text messages, their social media messages, and this is all part of the FOI, to make sure if any of this.
You would ask them to still check anything?
Anything.
It just makes it easier.
So it's, if you're FOIA'd, it goes beyond just your email. So it's.
If you use those things for town business, now if you have a personal one, you haven't been doing town business, then that would not be included, but you'd have to ask them, you know?
Right. I mean, but sometimes certain things pop up, or certain conversations may happen with somebody, or somebody reaches out and doesn't understand which avenue to make. But these things all fall under FOI that you'll be asked, is there anything in your personal email? Is there anything in your text messages? And from Tom Hennig, from what he said, I mean, this is a process that's used across the state, so, I don't know. I know it's not a lot of money, but I don't know if it's necessary at this point, but.
Counselor Obray's already spoken. Anybody else want to speak? Counselor Obray?
Okay. The technicalities of these things, I don't understand too well. But I know, like with my own programs, I have a certain amount of capacity. And then, you know, you have to make other arrangements for where your things are going to go, cloud or whatever. Do we have an unlimited capacity?
We back up all town, all town email, emails.
Yeah. Is that the answer to my question?
Yeah, yeah, unlimited for town emails, yes. We make sure we have enough to back it up.
Can I follow off that?
Unless it's going to be 30 years worth.
So I know we back up at work as well, but every time you add more to it, your, the cost increases to back more up. Is that the case as well on top of the $2,000?
Sure, the more data you back up eventually, you have to expand your data, your data storage amount.
So for the $2,000 on the licensing, is that just licensing, or does that include the data backup as well?
That's just the licensing.
And that's going to be every year, $2,000?
Correct.
So Counselor Obray has the floor.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
I just wanted to come off that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So we don't have to anticipate additional costs in the future as this builds up?
Well, if you consider, well, if we get to that amount of storage, but we're talking RTM emails, you're probably not talking a lot of emails. I doubt it would have a major impact. Honestly, the, I thought originally IT would say it's a lot of, you know, work setting everybody up and going on their phone or laptop and helping them get it set up, but Brian didn't think it was a big deal, Brian Hancock. He thought he could get it done pretty quickly.
Can we kind of keep an eye on that?
Sure. I don't think it'll have much impact, though. But I would definitely keep an eye on it.
You know, if I might digress for just a second. I was on the RTM when we decided to go with computers. And the first piece of equipment that they brought into the town hall, they couldn't get it through a door. And I remember everybody standing up at that meeting saying, it's going to take over this town. It's going to take over this town. It has.
Was Hal? So Heed and then Baumgartner.
So Counselors Zepari isn't here tonight, so I have to, in like.
In his spirit?
In his spirit. Just remind us that when we're trying to control spending, there's every item that comes across our table, we like it, we think it's a good idea, it has some validity or justification, but we also need to be cognizant of what we want to, or might be willing to cut in the future if we increase the expenses here. So if you think I like the bloom, when you squeeze it here, it goes up over there. Just, I mean, I know it's only $2,000, not $80,000, but it's still $2,000.
Right. And we are at the point in budgets where you're really not able to cut to balance those things. So when we add things, we are adding things.
Counselor Baumgartner?
From your perspective, as the manager, as you're trying to communicate with the RTM members, would it make your job easier and your staff easier to communicate town business?
You know, the hard part about the personal ones is they're constantly, they seem to be constantly changing. I'm always scrambling to, to be able to have the full list to contact the RTM. That's, that's one nice thing for me, it makes it easier. I do send, similar to me giving you updates, when things happen, I, on some things, I send it to the full RTM, too.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Melendez?
I just would like to say that the way we sort of cut, like the manager was saying, the way we cut, if we wanted to cut this out, say you cut $2,000, at least it was on the RTM. When you cut money out of the budget, you can't specifically say, I want to cut this out. You just cut the number, and then whatever they want to cut out is cut out. So I think if, if this cost at $2,000 a year isn't really adding $2,000 worth of value to the town every year, maybe we shouldn't add it in, because cutting it out would be, I guess, difficult.
Counselor Obray and then Bordelone?
Oh, I should, I was ready to know. It'll come back.
We'll come back. Counselor Bordelone?
I just, once again, I just think it, you know, the RTM, just like all we are, are all volunteers, and I think having one central hub where everything is operated under, streamlines the process, makes it more transparent, more congruent, and just more, you know, the functionality is smoother. There's nothing stating, I could change my email five times on the RTM, and no one can control that, and you could FOI all of them, or, you know, I just think that it, and then there's some people that we might not know that might still have old RTM emails still open, and who knows what they're corresponding about on any given time. Like mine is currently still open, and I'm waiting for the last people to say, yes, on my list of recipients, that you understand that this is closed, because I still get some stuff coming in, and then I need to close it. But having this all under one umbrella, I had to close one of my personal emails several times, not for the one for RTM, but just because it was hacked in general. Having it under the municipality, if it was to be hacked or compromised, this is something that the town would control, and someone wouldn't have to reopen an email or redo it. And once again, for cutting off purposes, you know, you activate, the person decides to resign, you can cut it off pretty quick, and reactivate as needed. Makes sense to me. I understand, I think there's other things that we approve. I do, I respect what Counselor Melendez says, but I do think it would benefit the town as the town is ever-changing, and more things are becoming more streamlined and more, you know, technology and computer central. I think it's important to make sure we're giving the proper tools to the people that we're asking to do the job and volunteer, and I think it would pay for itself. We do approve other things for much greater cost, but that's my opinion, and thank you.
Counselor Obray, did you?
Yeah. In using this, you would be specific as to whom you're sending an email to.
Say again?
You're sending out an email. You would be specific, like, do you have a group, one for the council?
Right, I have one for the RTM, right.
And you have a group, one for the RTM, and et cetera. Okay, thank you.
So we have Counselor Parker and then Franco.
As Representative for District 2 for the four years before coming on council, that would have been nice. That way, it would've been town business, and then people can contact you that way. It would have made things a little bit easier, because that's a personal email, and so being, it's really technically a personal. I still receive information under that RTM one, and I called it RTM, just to keep it separate. But I think, you're right, it makes it all uniform, that, and the fact that the IT department can make sure there's no junk mail going to it, because they block it. It's automatic block, you don't want anything to go into it. And if they're hacked, it'll send them a notice, too. So I just feel better, safer that way.
Counselor Franco?
So tonight, we're looking at possibly spending more money on ballots. We're also looking to spend money on possibly emails. And I'd just like to remind everybody, we had probably a 45-minute, at the minimum, debate on budget for outside services, even on symphonies, which was $4,000. To spend $4,000 for kids to go to a symphony. So, and whether we should, I mean, they were like.
Shh, she has the floor.
And, so I'm just saying, like, it's not, I just want you to remember that, when it comes budget season, we are like, we really get into it. So we are arguing over a $2,000 spending for women. I don't even know what some of those things were. There was homeless people, there was all kinds of things that we were, I mean, we were in the weeds on that. And we were arguing over $2,000 if we were going to spend it or not. So that's what I'm trying to say, like, is, so I'm sort of weighing, I'm thinking to myself, my God, we had that thing on the rape crisis center, and now we're talking about just spending this on an email. And we fought over whether we were going to spend money on a rape crisis center for $2,000.
Exactly.
So I just want you to just remember, like, we fought about that for quite some time, at the minimum 45 minutes. So just, I don't know, I know it's a small amount of money, I get it, but tonight, I mean, I just don't think it's something that's an absolute necessity. That's my personal opinion.
All right. So has everyone who wanted to speak spoken, then we can go back through. Yes, okay. So we have Counselor Parker and Bordelone who wish to speak.
So this is only a discussion. We do not have to say anything about this item. This is us just discussing what we would like.
Whatever you want to do.
Wherever we want to do. Just to clarify, that this is, we're only having a discussion. We can, we have not made a motion, it's just a discussion item.
Counselor Bordelone?
With respect to Counselor Franco, I do respect your opinion, and I do agree. And as, coming from the RTM, where I was not on the council at the time with those numbers, it was hard to sit on the RTM after things were cut. We could only move certain, to a certain number after the town council makes their decision. With that being said, we have had people come before us where they were willing to pay for half of things, and we then raised that number to pay for 100% of it when they offered to pay for half of their expenditure of an item at their business. And we moved that number pretty quickly, an extra $4,000. So I just, I understand, I think we need to look at it as a whole, and I respect that opinion, but I do agree when it comes to those types of things. Also, the direction of the budget, I mean, we're kind of somewhat restricted as to how much we can move, and a lot of the cuts were coming in those areas prior to the council receiving them. And so, you know, it was kind of, we can only move so far with the manager's number, and then on the RTM, so far with the council's number. So it is, but that's an important area, and it does keep getting cut, and that's something that I would not like to see. But I do think that we do have $2,000 to make this more streamlined. Thank you.
So I'm going to just jump in here and piggyback on what Counselor Parker had said. There's no resolution tonight, and my thought is, tomorrow evening, when you're at the RTM meeting, perhaps you could float it to the body and see how many would actually be using an RTM email account. If they feel it would be useful to them, and let them, you know, jump in and have their two cents on what they think. So I would say not to do anything on this this evening, since we're kind of split, and we don't really know what they want at this point. If that's consensus?
But thanks, John, for the information on it.
And then we'll report back.
Thank you, sir. All right. So we are on to 5H, appointment of Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee by Mayor. I had two counselors respond that they were not interested, and as per my email, I said I would just be appointing otherwise. So I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the following Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee members, Counselors Zepari, Counselor Melendez, and Counselor Bordelone. Is there a second?
Second.
Granatowski, seconded by?
Obrey.
Obrey? Okay. Counselor Heed?
Could we ask everybody here who wants, who would be willing to get on, just in case?
Nobody replied, so I'm assuming they were all willing to serve. Is there anyone who I didn't mention that would love to be clamoring to be on this committee? Counselor Bordelone?
I'm actually not interested in being on that committee, so I really would like to not be appointed.
I need a third member then to be on the committee.
With all due fairness, I, the Rules one never came out, the rule to be appointed never came out like that, and was never asked, when, if we wanted to be on it, and you said no one responded on this one, but the, when we did the Rules, I didn't even get a, you know, we had a vote here, but I didn't think there was much discussion on it. I think I'm better served elsewhere. I'm just not necessarily wanting to be on Rules, but I'm not interested in being on this particular committee.
So you choose not to serve on Personnel Appointments?
Yes.
So Counselors Zepari, Counselor Melendez, is there a third person who would like to serve on this? We have other counselors that are serving on other committees already. Counselor Obray, Counselor Parker, and Counselor Baumgartner are already serving on Rules. Counselor Baumgartner?
Clarifying question, is the committee the temporary Rules Committee or the Rules Committee?
That would be the temporary Rules Committee to write the rules.
And so when, when would the Rules Committee?
It can become the permanent Rules Committee, but if someone wandered off at that point, we could change it at that point. But we need a Personnel and Appointments Committee person appointed this evening.
How many is required for the chair?
Three are required.
I replied.
Right. I did, I did send it out in plenty of notice, and I asked for people to reply yes or no. And as I said, only two counselors replied no. And so then I assumed everyone else was willing to serve, and that's how I based my decision.
I thought no reply was that I wasn't, I was not interested.
No, I was very clear in my email.
I guess Conrad goes back, go ahead.
He and Counselor Franco replied that they were not interested in serving again.
I've done my, I've done my two years, and I think it's a great committee, but I thought I'd give someone else a chance.
Yes. Someone else needs a chance to serve. So we will go with two counselors. I will amend my motion at this point, and then I will hope for a third volunteer to recommend a resolution approving the following Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee members, Counselors Zepari and Counselor Melendez. I so move. Do you second that, Ms. Wall? Thank you. All those in favor, Counselors Zepari and Melendez, serving on the Personnel Appointments Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. All those in favor of Counselors of Perry and Melendez serving on the Personnel Appointments Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. I hereby move that the members of the town council along with, excuse me?
Sorry, I thought we were going to go ahead and change the order.
Oh, that's right. There was a request by Counselor Borderline to change the order of the meeting this evening, and there was no objection, so by consensus, we will take other business at this point. Is there other business that the council has? Counselor Bum Gardner?
Yes. It's my understanding tomorrow will be hit with a small snowstorm, and a constituent and town employee actually came, came to me and asked, what can our homeless, or I should say, houseless population do in the case of inclement weather so they can have the proper shelter they need so they do not freeze?
I know there's an emergency plan that the police have, and, you know, for one thing during the day, you know, if it's, depending on the level of emergency, of course, you could go to the library and senior center. You know, if it's bad enough, you know, certain places could be opened, but I don't have that plan with. I have to ask the police to update that, or update you on that. And he will be here, by the way. Chief Visaro is coming to give an update next month, and you can, just a few weeks in, question him more.
And in that update?
And he would tell me, we would, you know, constant contact, and we would make a decision, okay, we're seeing the need. And they check on people during these types of storms and stuff.
Could he provide a report? Can I ask that he provide, provide a report on our homeless population and?
In front of me, I'm a homeless person.
Well, in the case of inclement weather, ensuring that they, you know, they're folks who are staying here and are part of our community are safe in the case that the weather is deadly.
I'll find out some information, and I'll send it out tomorrow.
Okay.
And just know that the people from Covenant Shelter sent their outreach team within the past month to contact the known campments, and they actually enrolled more people, and they said that they had room and re-provided the contact information for them. So they were hopeful that they would be coming back once the weather started turning cold.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
I was wondering if we can possibly have Chief Visaro come in and speak to us about litter, and if they're enforcing it, and are they giving tickets? And I'd like to have, just due to these plastic reduction and the complaints that we're hearing about plastic being littered.
Again, he'll be here to, a general update. You can ask any questions you want.
And when would that be?
I put it on my management report last week. Let me see if I can.
Sorry.
1:28. Just because we have quite a few.
Can I add to that?
Can you just let him be, let him know that I'll be bringing up litter?
Sure.
Thank you.
Because somebody else is next, so.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Borderline?
I just wanted to double clarify to check, just coming, piggybacking off Andre Bum Gardner's question about people who need shelter. We currently do not have a shelter in place here for people in the, in our town, right? They have to go up to outside sources.
Like you said, you can open up facilities. The problem is, you know, they're not staffed at night. It'd have to be pretty extreme.
We don't have a functioning facility in our town currently, I think.
We have, we have family shelter, but not outside. Counselor O'Bri.
What I'd like to ask for, in conjunction with what is being asked for, is Public Works to tell us what the cost would be for signs and installation, the fact that we do have fines for litter. If we're going to ask the police department if they would help us enforce litter control, we got to have signs that say, I don't know exactly what the verbiage would be, but other, you know, you throw it out, you pay.
Yeah.
And so we need to coincide the two different things, so we need to know what the cost would be, so that if we get the cooperation from the police department, we're going to get the cooperation from the Public Works Department and what that cost would be to put signs up.
Do we do those in-house? Mr. Burt, we can do a lot of signs in-house.
We do certain signs in-house, yeah.
Yeah, which would be great, but we might as well know if we're going to get both sides of the sandwich.
Okay, is there any other, other business? Okay, so now, we are going to go to 5I, which is proposed legislation discussion on page 28. I hereby move that the members of the town council, along with Town Manager John Burt, Senator Heather Summers, Representative Christine Conley, Assistant Town Manager Bob Zagami, Thomas Quinn, Chase Quinn, Chris Reagan, Finance Director Cindy Landry, Assessor Mary Gardner, and Attorney Eric Callahan, who went to executive session. Do I see Eileen out there as well?
Yes.
That's for the next one.
Okay. Go into executive session pursuant to General Statute Section 1-2006E for the purpose of discussing a matter which would result in the disclosure of public records or the information contained therein described, that being in a town, that being an attorney-client communication involving a proposed state legislation. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of going into executive session for the matter described, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are in executive session at 8:54 for item 5I.